Good evening, welcome to the June 20th session of the Bellingham City Council. Bellingham City Council meets all requirements of the State of Washington Open Meetings Act. On July 11th, 2016, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers, the city council will host a public hearing regarding a request by Lydia Place for a comprehensive plan amendment and zoning text amendment for property located at 1701 Gladstone Street. On July 25th, 2016, at 7:00 PM in council chambers, the city council will host a public hearing regarding ordinance relating to the council wards of the city. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. April Barker?
Here.
Jane Knudsen?
Here.
Michael Elloquest?
Here.
Roxanne Murphy?
Here.
Pinky Vargas?
Here.
Terry Bornhamon?
Here.
And Dan Hamel is excused. Thank you. Last week, with great sadness, we raised the pride flag at half mast here at City Hall. And tonight, I ask for a moment of silence in memory of the victims of the tragedy in Orlando one week ago. While it is important to take a moment of silence out of respect for the lives lost, I urge you not to be silent in your lives. I've been rather emotional and troubled all week about why we have accepted the behavior to kill each other over diversity, which should be celebrated, not feared. Civil rights are being violated everywhere in this country. LGBTQ, blacks, Latinos, women are all under attack in America by Americans. And I ask you to speak up for injustice. We cannot ask others to be more accountable than we are willing to be. Change requires action through legislation and love and acceptance of the diversity of the human race. This I urge you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana.
Okay, so we are going to start with something a little bit more joyous. And we are going to do the recognition of the winners of the 2015 Essence of Bellingham Photography Competition. And I'm going to turn it over to Vanessa Blackburn, our communications director.
Hi, Vanessa Blackburn, communications director for the city. And it's a great pleasure this year to announce the finalists and the winners of the 2016 Essence of Bellingham Photo Competition. So first, I'm just going to talk a little bit about the competition. This year, we had over 300 participants, which is great. We always try to get as many folks in the community to participate as possible. And they were amateur and professional photographers of all ages, from kindergarten all the way up to seniors in our community. So it was a nice range of folks participating. Choosing the top photos, the winning entries this year were selected, and there was a lot of discussion among the judges about how well these photos captured really the essence of Bellingham. What makes our community special? And so there was a lot, that was a particular emphasis this year among the conversation with the judges. But they also looked at photographic quality and the subject matter of the photos as well. This year's jury competition jury was Jeff Jewell from the Wachem Museum. These photos will be entered into the museum as part of the city's archives, so it was nice to have Jeff on board. Erin Wright, who was our communications intern and also a Western student who studied photography. Emma Bernfield from the planning department. Gabriel Miles, owner of Gabriel's Art Kids. And Garth Amundson from the Fine Arts Photography Department at Western. And we definitely have a special thanks for Steven Niedemeyer in the IT department for all of his work to help compile, do all the backend computer stuff to make sure that the contest ran really smoothly. So where can the public see entries? All of these entries are on the city's website. And then, as you all saw when you came into City Hall, we also have a large display of all of our winners and our honorable mentions downstairs in the lobby at City Hall. They will also be selected, photos will be shown on BTV 10 throughout the year, so a lot of times in between programs you'll see Essence of Bellingham winners. And then, as I said, they'll be added to the Wachem Museum's photo collection. And also, on our website, which has been, was recently launched in the last year, we use a lot of Essence of Bellingham photographs on our website as well. So it's a great thanks to the photographers in our community. And now, we have, I think, three of our six top winners here today. Is that right, three? And we will start with the Best of Class Kindergarten Through Fourth Grade, Mother and Sister by Amelia Van Nykirk, is that correct? And if I could have the mayor please help with...
I'll stand here.
...handing out. So if you, Amelia, if you'd like to come up and receive your award, if we could have a round of applause for Amelia.
This isn't a test, is it?
Thank you, Amelia. And next, we have Best of Class College, Life Above the Lake by Alex Powell. And next, we have Best of Class Amateur, Larrabee Winter Evening by Jeremy Carroll. Is Jeremy here? He could not be with us tonight. We also get lots of beautiful sunshots. Third place is Marty's Bike by Alice Horton. Is Alice here tonight? She's not here. And Alice was a winner in last year's competition as well. And for second place, we have Clark's Point by Austin Shenton. Is Austin here? Austin's unable to make it today. And our first place Best of Show winner was Rooftop Cinema by Aaron Brick. Aaron? Beautiful. It's gorgeous. Thank you very much. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Kelly. So I just want to make sure that we thank everyone who participated. It's always such a great art show where it's, you know, for us to be able to celebrate the arts in our community. And for those photographers who are interested in doing it for next year, they need to go to cob.org, and there's information on there about how to take photographs and submit for next year's competition. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vanessa, and Shannon, and Mayor, and all those wonderful photos. That's wonderful. We are going to move to our public hearing. And just a reminder, if anybody signed up for public comment, that public comment has now been moved to behind our public hearings. And if we could, I don't know who has the, do we have a sign up sheet? Michael, could you grab that for us? Okay, so I'm just going, someone could grab the lights?
Oh, there it looks.
So tonight, we are going to have a public hearing for Initiative 1433. Washington State Initiative 1433 would increase the state hourly minimum wage for employees who are at least 18 to $11 in 2017, $11.50 in 2018, $12 in 2019, and $13.50 in 2020. This measure would require employers to provide sick leave starting in 2018 that employees could use in certain circumstances, including to care for family members as defined, make the Minimum Wage Act, and this measure apply to individual care providers and adopt related laws. Prior to voting on the resolution, council is holding our public hearing under RCW 42-178-555 to allow for an equal opportunity for the expression of views on the resolution. So I don't know how many we have signed up, but this is how we're going to run the hearing? We're not going to run it at all?
Nobody.
But I'm all prepared!
You don't have to be a diplomat right now. That doesn't work?
Well, okay, so I guess I will say that we will close the...
Well, you have to open it first.
Oh, I have to open it so I can close it? I suppose that would make sense. So open our public hearing. Is there anyone here who did not sign up who would wish to speak on our public hearing? Going once, twice, anyone? No? Okay, wow, this is the shortest public hearing I have ever conducted. Okay, we'll consider that public hea...
Public hearing's closed. Okay, I will move that we support this resolution. When they came to us last year and asked for this, just in the city of Bellingham, I was opposed to that, and we didn't do it. Now, I think everybody in the state of Washington is going to get a chance to vote on it, and I think that's fantastic. And we urge them to do that. They are getting out there and getting signatures all over the place, so more power to them, and I'm proud to support this resolution.
Could you make a motion? Council members? Second. Anyone else? Okay. I myself, I'm very supportive of this. I think it's wonderful that if it goes through as a state initiative, everyone across the board gets the same treatment, and that's, I think that's a really great way for us to go. So I too will be supporting Initiative 1433. Roxanne?
I had a little bit of courage in trying to, I had a little bit of courage in trying to bring this forward and stick my neck out for this at our local level, but I'm even happier that this could go to the voters as a statewide initiative, so everyone will equally have their say about it. I think this could really help our families and individuals out in a very special way. So I hope people will sign a petition if you see one, and if it makes it to the ballot, please support it if you're so able to. So thank you for your support, City Council.
We have a motion in front of us, and this is to support Initiative 1433. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0 with Dan Hamel excused. I did not mention that, but Dan Hamel is excused and away with family this week. Okay, we're going to move to our next public hearing. Do I have anyone signed up for that one? Oh, come on, this is making the job too easy. What we have in front of us is a consideration of an application for a Bureau of Justice grant in the amount of $23,752. The police department would like to apply for a grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance in the amount of $23,752. The application requires an opportunity for the department's governing body and citizens to comment on the proposed use of funds. The plans for this grant would be to secure a backfile conversion specialist to take all the police department records that are on microfilm and microfiche and convert it to electronic imaging. Boy, that's going to be fun. And we will conduct our public hearing, but I wondered if, Deputy Chief, Flo Simon, would you care to say anything else about this before I open the busy public hearing?
Sure, I see the long line to comment on this one. I'm glad to be here before you council members. Like Pinky said, this is our effort to digitize what has been historically on our microfiche. And the city stopped supporting microfiche back in 2006. And I think we have approximately 46 images on each microfiche card, and it's going to take us a long time to convert that, but we did find somebody that, you know, gave us an estimate. It would save time for the record specialist in looking up people's histories in regards to their arrests and their dispositions. And so we're trying to get into this century and bring all that into a digitized manner. And one of the requirements, as you said, is to come before the public and allow public comment.
Okay. So I am going to officially open the public hearing. If anyone cares to say anything about the Bureau of Justice Grant? Anyone? That's two. Anyone wish to speak for the public hearing? No? Okay, I will consider that hearing closed. This was for information only, I guess, do we not want to, usually we wait when we have a public hearing, so we'll wait for all those public comments to come in, and we'll circle back on this. Thank you very much.
No. No.
It says information only.
Yeah, and they just go ahead and do it.
And then you just go, okay, so you don't need any...
Yeah.
You have fulfilled your requirements. And we have as well, the public has no testimony, so I guess we're good. Any other comments from council members? No? Okay. Wow, flying right along. So I can do the public comment period then. If there's anyone here, did anyone sign up for, oh, here we go, we do have a couple names for public comment. Yoshi Revell, if you want to come on down, you know the routine.
Hi, my name is Yoshi Revell. Thank you, members of the audience and staff, members of the city council, and Madam Mayor. First of all, thank you for mentioning what happened in Orlando. It was a tragic event that shook us. And anytime something like this happens, I think we also need to listen to the perpetrator. And one of the things the perpetrator said was, this is an exact quote, but, "For our military to stop killing in other countries." For our military to stop killing in other countries. Now, I certainly don't say that that excuses what he did, but we have to listen to why he did it. Secondly, congratulations to the photography people, even though they've left. One thing about it, though, I don't like the word competition. I think it should be something more like playing with photography. The word competition, to me, is an ugly word. The word competition, to me, leads to something like what happened in Orlando. We don't need to compete. We can do things kindly with each other and share the experience with each other. We don't have to compete. I don't like the word competition. And the thing that I actually came to speak on is, when domestic violence happens, it is an ugly thing that sickens us. And we are all involved in something, a domestic violence, that most of us don't think of as domestic violence. We've been abusing nature for ages. We have been abusing, we, the human family, have been abusing nature for ages. We owe nature an apology, a sincere and heartfelt apology for taking nature for granted and abusing nature. And we can do this as a city, passing a resolution. We can do this in our homes, we can do this in our places of worship, we can do this in our businesses, we can do it personally, wherever we wish to. We can walk into a nature and say very simply, "Nature, I apologize to you for the abuse that I've caused to you. I will make every effort to stop abusing you and to make amends." We have to do that. Nature is a living, breathing entity that we have been abusing, and we must stop and we must apologize. Thank you all for listening, and I wish you all a pleasant evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Yoshi. Is there anyone else who cares to wish to speak for public comment? Okay, so we are going to move to our committee meetings that were held this afternoon. We're going to start with Public Works, Public Safety, and Terry Bornhamon is the chair.
Thank you, Pinky. We had six items before the committee this morning. The first was the City of Bellingham-Wachem County Fire District 8 Interlocal Agreement for Fire and Basic Life Support Emergency Medical Services, EMS. The City of Bellingham and Fire District 8 are currently operating under an interlocal agreement for administrative service and firefighter training. The new interlocal agreement will provide for the continuation of these services with the addition of providing fire and EMS services throughout Fire District 8. The committee recommended that we authorize the contract, and I so move.
Counsel, discussion, questions? No? We have a motion in front of us to approve the interlocal agreement. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0.
The next item is one that we had before us a couple weeks ago. It was introduced, and so it came back today for action. It's an ordinance amending the Bellingham Municipal Code to repeal BMC 10.30.020 and to adopt a new code section consistent with state law to prohibit unlawful display or carry of electronic control device. Currently, the Bellingham Municipal Code prohibits the possession, use, or sale of tasers, stun guns, or similar electronic or energy weapons. Recent developments in the law have called general prohibition on the possession of electronic controlled devices into question. State law and the Bellingham Municipal Code currently makes it unlawful to carry or display a weapon in a manner that manifests an intent to intimidate another or warrants the alarm for the safety of another person's. This ordinance would repeal Bellingham's prohibition on the possession, use, or sale of electronic control devices, but adopt a new section modeled after state law that makes it expressly unlawful to carry or display an electronic control device in a manner that manifest an intent to intimidate another or warrants the alarm for the safety of another person. The committee recommended approval, and I so move.
Second. Counsel, discussion, comments? No? Okay, we have a motion in front of us to amend the Bellingham Municipal Code to repeal BMC 10-30-02 to adopt a new section consistent with state law to prohibit the unlawful display or carry of electronic control devices. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0.
Let me see, did I skip one? Let me see. Oh, here it is. The next, let me see. Got mixed up here a little bit on the pages. The next was an amendment, an ordinance amending Bellingham Municipal Code 9.12.080 by changing the penalty for noncompliance with Garbage Collection Code to a civil infraction. Bellingham Municipal Code 9.12 regulates garbage collection in the city of Bellingham. Currently, the penalty for noncompliance with the garbage collection code is a criminal misdemeanor. This ordinance would change the penalty to a civil infraction with a $500 fine. City administration recommends the penalty of civil infraction is better serving the interest of justice and reducing the burden on the criminal justice process. Committee recommended approval, and I so move.
Discussion, questions? Okay, we have a motion in front of us, the ordinance amending the Bellingham Municipal Code by changing the penalty for noncompliance with garbage collection to a civil infraction. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0.
The next item was to authorize the mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement between the City of Bellingham and Port of Bellingham regarding water main construction in C Street Right-Away. The port is preparing to commence a public works project known as the C Street Terminal Project on the city right-of-way known as C Street between the Roder Avenue intersection and Laurel Street intersection, located within the waterfront district. Included in the scope of work will be replacement of public eight-inch and six-inch cast iron water main that will be paid for with city funds. It is in the public interest to replace aging public water infrastructure with new ductile iron water main when possible. The scope and agreements are defined in the attached interlocal agreement. The committee recommended approval, and I so move.
Second. Counsel, discussion, questions? No? Okay, so a motion in front of us to authorize the mayor to enter into interlocal agreement between the city and port regarding the main, the water main construction for the C Right-Away. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0.
The next item was an information-only item, and it was Orchard Drive Extension, which will be known as Birchwood Avenue, ES-0440, Section 4F, impacts to the Bay to Baker Trail. Section 4F of the Federal Department of Transportation's Act 49 U.S.C. 303 concerns transportation projects that would use or impact a significant public park, recreation area, wildlife, or waterfall refuge, or historic site. The Orchard Drive Extension project is partially funded with federal funds. The Bay to Baker Trail is considered a 4F property. When federal funds are used for a project, the FHWA and Washington State Department of Transportation require that a determination be made for an exemption of programmatic evaluation and approval. WashDOT has developed a form for use by local agencies describing the de minimis exemption, which must be documented in the minutes filed within the city's local forum. The project will impact one quarter mile or less of trail. This was for information only. Okay, then moving to our last item, was Utilities and Transportation Committee's Rail Safety Program Opt-In. The Washington State Utilities and Transportation Commission, the UTC, performs rail safety inspection for all rail crossings in Washington State except for those cities with a first-class designation. The UTC has adopted two rules that now allow cities with a first-class designation the opportunity to opt into the rail safety program. The opt-in process requires the execution of a memorandum of understanding with the UTC and approval from the governing body. Opting into the rail safety program provides the city with an additional resource to ensure that the city's rail crossings are maintained and kept functioning in a safe manner. The committee recommended approval, and I so move.
Second. Discussion, questions? Okay, so a motion in front of us for, to opt into the UTC's rail safety program. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you, Terry.
End of committee reports.
Okay, next up, we have Planning, and Jean Knudsen is the chair.
Thank you, Madam President. We had three items. The first item was review of key concerns from the June 6th public hearing on the draft 2016 Comprehensive Plan. This morning, we heard from Rick Sepler and Lisa Poole, and they also did a great job on the public comment tracker with their answers of the questions that were brought up last Monday night. We discussed this, and we also discussed the fact that this issue is too big for just one committee, and we're going to go to Committee of the Whole with this. And I will move that we take this out of the Planning Committee and send it to Committee of the Whole, with the first work session being on June 27th at 1:00 PM. It'll be on Transportation and Capital Facilities.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in front of us to move the planning meetings to the Committee of the Whole for the rest of our comprehensive plan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0.
The second item...
Roxanne? I was asking if you needed to say that we switched these.
Oh, yes, you're right. On the 27th, it'll be Transportation and Capital Facilities. On the 11th, it'll be Land Use and Housing. I should have said that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Getting advice from a new council member, I'm in good shape, ain't I? Okay. The next item is a potential revision to the city's commercial zoning code. This afternoon, we received a... This afternoon, we received a nice report from the University of Washington, Department of Urban Design and Planning Graduate Division, Master of Urban Planning, Spring Studio. It is a great report. It will be available to the public, and this will be coming back to us in the near future with some possible action items. It's very well-written. The last item was adoption of the 2015 Washington State Building Code with local amendments. Revised Code of Washington, RCW 19.27, requires adoption of the 2015 Washington State Building Code on or before July 1st, 2016. The building codes include the International Building Code, IBC, International Residential Code, IRC, International Mechanical Code, IMC, Uniformed Plumbing Code, UPC, and the international existing building codes. The city will also adopt the 2015 International Property Maintenance Code, IPMC. Select amendments can be made to this building code by adopting, by the adopting jurisdiction. Such amendments are primarily administrative rather than technical in nature and are included in the above ordinance. Jim Tenner looked this over very well, and it's been deemed that there's nothing out of the norm in this, and if we're not hearing from anybody, everything's fine, so I move approval.
Second. Counsel, discussion, questions? Okay, so motion in front of us to amend the Washington State Building Code with local amendments. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero.
End of committee.
Okay. Moving right along. We did have a city council special meeting today. It was a closed-record hearing to consider an ordinance amending the Western Washington University Institutional Master Plan to enlarge the IMP District 18 to allow student housing along South College Drive. We did have a presentation by Alan Mariner, our deputy attorney. He also provided, gave us all the record information, and there was very little, well, we had a little bit of discussion, but minute, and our committee did recommend to approve the planning commission's recommendation, and also, we had a motion to bring the ordinance forward for the first and second reading this evening, so therefore, we're going to put, we will allow a motion, and therefore, I so move to recommend the, to approve the recommendations that were adopted by the planning commission.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I'm just going to check with Peter to make sure we did that right.
You want to move, move the ordinance?
Okay, so, all right. And we will also have a motion to bring the ordinance forward to the first and second reading this evening, and therefore, I so move.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Then we had committee of the whole. We had nine items in front of us today. The first one, let's get to that page, is a resolution demonstrating substantial progress on the 2016 Comprehensive Plan update. We had a very good presentation by Rick Sepler, oh, sorry, by Greg Ockett and Rick Sepler, and we were discussing the fact that our comprehensive plan will not be meeting the deadline of June 30th, and discussed the extension of completion, and we, this was for, oh, no, wait, no, we did vote on this, did we not? Yes, we did. And we, and committee did recommend approval of the resolution.
Second.
And therefore, I so move, so, and a second, and moving right along. Counsel, any discussion, questions? Okay, so, motion in front of us is to approve the, the resolution for the extension of our comprehensive plan update. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Okay. Number two was addressing the town gown tension utilizing a coordinated approach to address issues associated with off-campus housing and behaviors, lessons learned from Fort Collins College Town Gown Program. So we had a presentation by Lindsay Kirchner and Ryan Nelson. They did a great presentation of laying that out, and they shared the lessons learned, and I encourage anybody who wants to learn a little bit more of this to do watch the committee meeting from this afternoon. But some of the things they talked about in regards to education and working collaboratively with the colleges is about doing a party registration, how to teach them to house a responsible party, we could probably all use that lesson, and, and they shared with us what our, what their next steps are going to be in moving forward with their committee and their regulations, and this was for information only, and we'll be very excited to see what they come up with in the future. The third item today was Sustainable Service Processes Update, also referred to as our Level of Service Discussion. Counsel, the city has initiated several processes to evaluate strategies that if successfully implemented, will ensure the sustainable provision of services for the community into the future. Staff provided counsel on the status of the ongoing processes. Couple of things to note here. There is, if anybody is curious, I'll just show you this to you, but this is online, and we have a great diagram showing the processes that we are actually looking for, or looking at in 2016 for our Level of Service Discussion, and our planning and community director, Rick Sepler, identified those things, and also showed that some things will be on hold, for example, the Metropolitan Park District, until a future date because there is a vote in front of us in November for Greenways, which could affect that. So, a couple of things to note that we are, that is still on the docket for 2016, our lean process, our EMS levy, the museum, our aquatic center contract, surplus properties, Mount Baker Theater. So, if anyone wishes for more detail, this is all in our packet information, and please do feel free to ask us. So, thank you for that, Rick, and I believe that was for information only. Okay. Item number four was a review of potential surplus property criteria and process. So Kate gave us a really wonderful presentation, and the city of Bellingham currently owns or manages over 5,000 acres of land within Wacom County. While most of these properties provide a valuable public benefit, some are surplus to the city's need either now or in the future, and the purpose of the project is to develop criteria for evaluation of city properties to determine and recommend which properties are potentially surplus to the city's needs. The criteria for evaluation will establish a repeatable, transparent, and baseline process for surplus property determination. We're going to use our GIS attributes to the property. We are going to list all the existing, all the existing properties. The in, there were several criteria for our evaluation, a large one being an environmental evaluation that has conservation easements, wetlands, et cetera, that are put in those. And the timeline for this, they are going through this entire process right now, but hope to have an analysis in July and August, and September, by September or December, recommendations for properties for us to surplus. Is there anything else that anyone wanted to note on that one? Okay, so, they did ask us to provide direction, and I believe that Rick Sepler did receive feedback from us on if there's anything in particular. I think that we just gave comments on things we would like to see in the evaluation, which were all recorded and added. Okay, number five. Proposed ordinance amending Bellingham Municipal Code 4.84. Staff proposes to amend BMC 4.84 for disposition of surplus real property to clarify language and more accurately reflect current real estate transaction processes. And we did look at this before, so this is our second viewing of it, and we just had a little overview of past discussion by Peter Raffato, our city attorney, and we have an ordinance to pass, so I propose, I move that we pass the ordinance amending Bellingham BMC 4.84.
Second.
Discussion, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I feel like I'm doing all the talking. Okay. That's why it feels like that. The sixth item in front of us today was the Interlocal Jail Facility Use Agreement. On May 19, 2016, the Wacom County Executive sent a letter to the mayors of Wacom County Cities proposing a two-year jail facility use agreement. The letter from the executive office requests that cities sign the agreement in advance of July 1, 2016. The Wacom County Administration has agreed to certain changes proposed by the city of Bellingham. The attached memorandum provides more detail. So, Peter Raffato gave us a quick overview on this, and said, we are choosing option two. We did discuss the increase in fees, and those are all included in the packet. And with that, I so move.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Liliquist.
Yeah, I'm going to vote to support this, but I'm slightly uncomfortable with the numbers, but now is not the time to fix that problem. Later on, I think tonight, you'll be talking about a county task force, and I think that will be the place to address these numbers. This is a short-term agreement, so I can, I can live with these numbers now, and we can work it out a better solution long-term later.
Agreed. I don't think we're all super happy with it, but we're doing the best that we can under the circumstances. Councilmember Murphy.
Just wanted to say I'm looking forward to always having the opportunity to negotiate this with our county friends, so I look forward to that.
Okay, so the motion in front of us to pass the Interlocal Jail Use Agreement. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Number seven, we had a discussion of the Salary Commission. Counsel asked staff to draft an ordinance creating a Salary Commission for establishing the salaries of elected officials. The attached memorandum provides background and information regarding current Bellingham Charter code provisions related to salaries. The draft ordinance which is attached is the anticipated work of the commission. The draft ordinance, which is for discussion purposes, will require council input prior to final consideration. The council, or, sorry, staff asked us for, to provide direction, so a couple of things that I wanted to state about the Salary Commission that came up this afternoon. One, knowing that the Salary Commission is, gets together and will provide recommendation, this supersedes all the current statuses for salary increases, and they will take a look at all of those things. The staff asked us to provide guidance on how often we would like the Salary Commission to convene, and how many members. So, we voted on four, a four-year term, and seven members. So, I don't, do we need to vote on that again, or we just, this is providing direction, and you, and the staff has what you need? Okay? Councilmember, any comments or questions? Councilmember Borneman.
Yeah, I think it was, what we voted on was not a four-year term, but a, we would review, they would review every four years.
Four-year review. Thank you. Yeah. Councilmember Liliquist.
Sorry, Pinky, one final clarification.
No problem.
The commission wouldn't provide recommendations. They would actually control the salary setting, and we would have nothing to do with it anymore.
Right, okay. Thank you for that clarification. That is an important clarification, that we have no say in this, and a reminder also that the elected officials are not just here on the dais and the mayor, but also our judicial system as well, so all of those are under consideration for the Salary Commission. Okay, and the big one for us today, oh, wait, you know what? We switched agenda items eight and nine in our committee this afternoon, and I think we should stick with that, so we will start with which was item number nine, and it is the, was the work session regarding the Transportation Benefit District, funding allocation in the 2017-2022 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. Since the implementation of the tip in 2010, funding has been allocated between three projects on the city's Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program, one arterial resurfacing, two non-motorized projects, and three transit enhancements. The contract with WTA for supplemental transit service has expired, and WTA is no longer requesting operational support. A public hearing was held on June 6, 2016, to receive public input on proposed change to the project allocation that would split the TBD funding between arterial resurfacing and non-motorized projects no longer funding transit enhancements. We had a presentation by Ted Carlson today, our Public Works Director. Ted, is there anything else that you would like to say about this?
Yes, thank you, Ted Carlson, Public Works. I would just point out that you have a copy of the amended resolution as discussed in the work session this morning, and perhaps I can highlight what those amendments were. First of all, actually, something staff caught when we went back, the title was not clear in the resolution. It didn't have an entire title, so we added that this would be a resolution of the city of Bellingham amending Bellingham, Washington regarding the allocation of transportation benefit district funds. That wasn't clear before, so we added that, and it's in track changes. And then in the sixth whereas, that's where the, the primary change was made. It now reads, whereas the contract between the TBD and WTA for enhanced transit service is expiring at the end of 2016, and the WTA Board has stated that they no longer need operational support from the TBD, although WTA has indicated that they anticipate future capital project needs, or capital projects in Bellingham for which they may seek TBD support. And that last part was the clarification that the TBD, or the WTA, may come back in the, in the future and request TBD funds for transit-related capital projects.
Thank you. One of the things you did state this afternoon is we had a lot of public comment about us not funding the WTA, and to reiterate, the WTA, the board is no longer requesting support for service, but they are planning to expand services, so this is not about reducing services. Quick question for you, Peter, do we have to do a vote for the amendment, or do we just do a vote for the TBD as amended?
You can vote as amended.
As amended? Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion in front, I, I will make a motion. The motion is to adopt the funding allocation in the 2017-2026 transportation improvement program as amended on Article 6 in the whereas. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Do we have a second?
Oh, yes, we do. Jeez.
Now we have a second.
We have a second, and a motion. Again, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you, somebody is paying attention. Okay, so now we're going to go back to item number eight on committee of the whole, which was the work session regarding the draft 2017-22 Transportation Improvement Program. This is for the tip. The six-year tip is adopted annually to plan a public program funding toward capital improvements in Bellingham's multimodal transportation network. State law, RCW 35-77-010, requires cities to adopt the tip before July 1 each year. The draft 2017-2022 tip is based on public works staff recommendations. Public works staff presented the draft tip to Public Works Advisory Board and the Transportation Commission on May 10, 2016. Public Works presented specific funding information regarding all projects listed on the draft tip. We held a public hearing on June 6, and council, and we had our council work session to consider adoption of the tip this afternoon. We had a robust discussion about the tip, and actually, I'd like to turn it over to Ted Carlson, if you, if you care to give us a little bit more information on this. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Before the council, on the dais is an amended project number two, which is now the non-motorized transportation improvements. I would like to say that some of the numbering of the projects has changed now, now that the transit services is, is no longer on the tip, based on the previous action, some of the numbering has changed, but the project descriptions remain the same, and it doesn't change anything fundamentally about the tip other than the numbers will be different. So before you is an amended non-motorized transportation improvement project, which adds some clarification that when determining the priority of non-motorized projects, the needs of the WTA should be considered, and I can read that portion of the project narrative, which now says, "Non-motorized improvements are primarily prioritized through the pedestrian and bicycle master plans, but also through grant funding opportunities and other capital improvement needs, such as those of WTA for public transit." It clarifies, that was included by a request of Councilmember Liliquist and to clarify It clarifies, that was included by a request of Councilmember Lillquist, and it clarifies that transit is an important aspect of how we determine which projects are priority.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to pass the six-year tip as amended in project two. All those in favor, oh, I'm just going to make my motion, and be quiet.
I'll second.
Discussion? Comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you, Ted. Okay, and that was Committee of the Whole. We have two sets of minutes in front of us this evening. Okay. They are, I think we have to approve those separately. So for the first evening sets of minutes is for May 16, 2016. Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Second set of evening minutes is for June 6, 2016. Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Older new business. I have a couple of things, but if anyone wishes to go in front of me.
I'm going to be real quick.
Okay.
I just want to thank you for your words tonight, but when I got home from the meeting this afternoon, I sat down and watched television, which I shouldn't have done. Four common sense gun laws were defeated in the United States Senate. All I can say on the United States Senate is shame on you.
Councilmember Barker and then Murphy.
So for those of you that would like to continue to show your support, it's important to note that we have a pride parade coming on July 10. It's at noon, and you can go to the Northwest Youth Services website to learn more, NWYS.org. They also have a pretty neat program called the Queer Youth Project. Many of you know that 40% of the homeless youth identify as queer here in Washington State, and from the counts that they've done, it's similar here in Bellingham. And this is a pretty unique program where you can show your support continuously throughout the year, so you can also go to the NWYS.org and see where you can support as well. Throughout the process of all of this, I think it's really easy to see the negative, but I just had some really great things happen this week. One was, I was at a Rotary Club meeting, and I just remembered Rotary Clubs of when I was young, and you know, you'd go to get a volleyball award or something from them, and it was very different than what I expected, and they opened it up with a heartfelt prayer. It was quite a long prayer, and it talked about all of our community members and our need for tolerance and acceptance, and I was just profoundly happy to be there, but also very, I'm constantly proven that Bellingham is quite an amazing place to be. So along with that, had a wonderful email from the Happy Valley Neighborhood saying how they recognize and realize that they need to make more room for all kinds of different housing types and to make sure that all kinds of people can be living in their neighborhood. So they are pretty excited to maybe be part of a pilot program for ADUs. And the heartfelt email that she sent is, "In acceptance," I thought, was pretty profound. And then to look in the paper and see that our library board president right here put a pretty amazing article in the paper about acceptance in our library and how we try to break down all the barriers. So I think there's messages out there all the time if we choose to see them, and I hope that we will continue in Bellingham to be more accepting of all types of people and all types of housing, and make sure that when we say we want to protect our neighborhoods, we need to think, who are you protecting your neighborhood from? Thank you.
Unfortunately, I see too many similarities between the way the members of our tribes, including me as a NOCSAC tribal member, have endured suffering and pain in losing people to horrible hate, to despicable hate, and to unfathomable hate. And that's why I am so proud to stand united with our LGBTQ community. As tribes, we are rising above all of this hate, and we are doing better every single day, and that's why I hope so many of our community members will join in supporting the LGBTQ community, because that's the kind of support that they need so we can all rise above anybody that tries to hurt us and harm our culture or our faith or our beliefs or any ways of life. So I just hope this is going to be one of the biggest pride parades that our community has ever seen, because I think that will be such an excellent way that we can show our support and be there for this community that really needs us.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I have a few informational things. A couple of things, you may have read this in the paper, but the Waukam County Council has established a jail stakeholder work group, and this will be to define how we're going to pay for it. So the county council is actually accepting applications for two citizen positions on the newly established jail stakeholder work group, one resident of the city of Bellingham and one from Waukam County, who resides, obviously, outside of the city. And the application deadline is 10:00 a.m. on July 5, 2016. So if anybody is interested, please apply with the county, with the council's administrative, her name is Dana, is it Dana? Thank you. And you can please see for her for that. Our participation in this jail stakeholder work group is, well, we have two members from the city council, that will be myself and Councilmember Jean Knutson, and Mayor Kelly will be participating as well. So this will be, look forward to updates from that one. I'm actually really excited, by the way, because I think this is a really great step forward for all of us to work together, and I'm very, I'm proud of the county for taking this leadership and making this happen. So thank you to the county council for that. Okay, this is in regard to the Greenways 4 Resolution. We are requesting volunteers to be on a committee to prepare for and a committee to prepare against statements for the Greenways 4 Resolution slated for the November 8, 2016 general election. The deadline is, the committee statement form is due no later than 4:30 p.m. on August 8, 2016. Rebuttal is due no later than 4:30 p.m. on August 11, 2016. Glad we're even on that. So please contact the mayor's office at 778-8100, or email mayorsoffice@cob.org for your statements for or against the Greenways 4 Resolution. Okay, anything else for older new business? Okay, we have a report out of our executive summary, and let's see, I've got so many papers here, I'm going to make sure I find the right one. Do, do, do. Ah ha, here we go. So we had a potential litigation claim number 2016-24. Staff provided information on a potential litigation matter. Action at this time, I would entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into a settlement agreement with the following terms, resolution of claim number 2016-24 for the payment of $21,663.08 to the claimant for damages resulting from a water main break. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Our second item was potential litigation, claim number 2015-50. Staff provided information on a potential litigation matter for information and discussion only, and no action was taken.
We have emptied the building.
We have emptied the building with our engaging processing. Okay, so I am now going to turn it over to Mayor Kelly for the mayor's report.
I have one comment and one approval and one information only for you. I'd like to commend our police department. We have apprehended both of our suspects that were involved in criminal activities just recently this month, and, well, I guess it was sooner than that, but we had a lot of cooperation cross-jurisdictionally, and I do believe that with the caliber of the police activities that we have in our community, that our community is a safe community, and it's always tragic when something horrible happens. And I'm very happy that these two people were apprehended. So thanks, thanks to the police department for that. I need your approval on appointing James Hubert to the Transportation Commission.
Move approval.
I'll second it.
So, Councilmember Barker.
I've mentioned this before, and the ones especially that we have to approve, I'm oddly interested in the qualifications and why they would like to be part of the commission, and it just says C attached again, and we don't have the attached.
Oh.
So I was just, in the future, hoping I could, especially, you know, things like Transportation Commission, I'm really interested in, I mean, we need a diverse group of people there, and I'm sure you're picking them just fine, but I would like to know.
And just so you know, I don't just pick them out of the hat.
Oh, yeah.
The Transportation Commission actually vets people that are interested and the public works staff, and makes recommendations to me.
Yeah.
And so just, it's not, I'm not just sitting in my office picking people, but I'm sure that we could include potentially their application form if you'd like to see that.
Oh, just when it says C attached, usually they want to write a lot about their qualifications or why they're interested.
Well, there's a one-page sheet that I get when they come to get interviewed.
I'm interested.
No, I'm just saying, if it's not there, we can provide it.
Okay, thank you.
Jane?
I'll tell you, he's very well qualified.
Okay, so we have a...
You'll see him on the trails a whole lot, running. He's a really avid runner, works with the prosecutor's department in the county, yes.
Went to school with my children, in case you're, you know, played ball.
Used to be a great ball player.
Yeah, great ball player.
Okay, we have a motion in front of us to approve James Hubert to the Transportation Commission. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six zero.
And secondly, just for your information, Cameron Jennings has been appointed to take over representing the Cornwall neighborhood on MNAC, Mayor's Neighborhood Advisory Commission. So I'm just letting you know that.
I was remiss on one item this evening, and I wanted to make sure that I did mention this, that we are attending the Association of Washington Cities Convention this week, many of us are attending, but also that our own mayor won an advocacy award from AWC, and we are very proud of our mayor and proud of the work that she does and the example that she sets to the rest of the state on her advocacy work and all the staff who supports her through that. So thank you, Mayor Kelly. We provide a safe, neutral environment. I didn't get to say that tonight. Okay, so consent agenda. Approval. Boom. Boom. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Consent agenda approved, six zero. Final consideration of ordinances.
Agenda Bill 21271, in ordinance accepting the donation of a conservation easement on real property.
Move third and final.
Terry Borneman?
Aye.
Jean Knutson?
Aye.
Michael Lillquist?
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy?
Aye.
Pinky Vargas?
Aye.
April Barker?
Aye.
And Dan Hamel is excused. Motion passes, six zero.
Okay, so thank you all for joining us. Our next meeting will be July 11. Until next time, we are adjourned.